...for Tuesday, September 21, 2021. To order, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
She is absent.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
We had no closed session, so I don't believe there's anything to report out, is there? There is nothing to report. Thank you so much for that head nod. Please rise and join me with Pastor Bernie Fetterman and the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful for who you are in our lives. And tonight, on behalf of our leaders, our city employees, and all citizens, we welcome you into this meeting. And future meetings, when there's much on the agenda and weighty matters to discuss, we welcome you into our city. We thank you for the leaders that you have given us, for the many positive steps forward our city is taking. We pray for the success of our businesses and for the development of new places for people to live in the future, the resources we need to keep thriving and not merely surviving. We welcome your wisdom and the collective wisdom of those in our community to keep moving forward, to help those with mental health issues, drug addictions, and housing challenges. With you and all of us working together, nothing is impossible. Help us to keep a positive attitude, to keep looking up and not giving up, and to have the hope and belief that our best days are ahead of us. May we use our influence and privilege for the good of others and endeavor to raise the quality of life for ourselves, our children, our neighbors, and always to be mindful of the decisions and actions that we take and make as they affect our tomorrows and future generations. We thank you for the many ways in which our leaders and our community collaborate and work together. May your hand of grace and peace be upon our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city department leaders and staff, and all their families and their concerns. And while we pray for ourselves, we also pray for our military all over the world, especially those downrange and in harm's way. Keep them alert and protect them. We also ask that you keep alert and protect our police and fire personnel who protect us and give them increased favor with the people of our city. We trust you, we thank you, and we're grateful for all your goodness. In your gracious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, if I could have those that are here for the proclamation of Constitution Week meet me at the podium, it would be great. So, this is a proclamation for Constitution Week, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd of 2021 as Constitution Week in the City of Lompoc, and urge our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Thank you, ladies, for being here. I appreciate you, and the microphone is now yours.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and we have a gift for you.
All right.
Whoops, it slipped out.
That's okay.
The seniors, or juniors, in the high schools all received a copy of the Constitution. And we, they also got a booklet on the flag code and a bookmark with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to present you one, and we have one for the, all the members of the council.
I can take those with me if you'd like.
Okay. And we have extra copies of the Constitution that will be, I'll be out back if you want a copy of the Constitution. And this is our Regent, Linda Everly, and I'm just the Constitution person, Nancy Thompson. So, enjoy, and thank you.
All right, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things tonight. To start off, the first one would be our Military Appreciation Day is happening in October at the Vandenberg Space Force Base. It's going to be Thursday, October 14, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I just spaced on the group that puts it on, but you'll know the name when I say it, who we're talking about that puts on the appreciation picnic, is looking for volunteers to help serve the food during this picnic. If someone is interested, if they can please call Ms. Sylvia King at 805-757-7307. Again, 805-757-7307. If you are interested, you would need to supply your driver's license at the visitor's center because they'll have to get passes for everybody that does volunteer to get onto the base. It's a great event, it's been going on for a number of years, and it'd be wonderful if we could get volunteers to help out. Fire crews are finishing their fifth two-week deployment, as well as training and outfitting our brand-new 2021 Pierce Fire Engine. We'll be having the fire department bring over the new fire truck, October 19 meeting, so it's going to sit right behind our chamber, so the council and the public can view and get a hands-on tour of the new truck. Our electric division is finishing all of the testing for the new apprentices, and is looking to hire up to three more after all the testing is complete. So that's something we haven't been able to do for a while, we're getting better staffed over there. Building and planning is still going, just going crazy with all the work going on. The Vaughn's demolition permits to restore the Shell Building have been approved in preparation for the new tenants. If you go by right now, you'll see everything is all fenced off, they're getting ready to start all the heavy work inside. Burger King, right near there, is going to be going into a remodel and an update, excuse me, for its building on H Street, and we had a new record of 104 building inspections done. And as a reminder, this is with the staffing level of the same person doing the building official duties, plan review and checking, and building inspection. So my hat's off and kudos to Eric Hagan for all he does to help keep the building process moving forward. And, not done yet, we have LandSat-9 Launch Week, and Launch Week activities have been moved following the postponement of the launch that was supposed to happen last week. These activities will be held as part of the LandSat-9 Launch Week, now taking place September 23 through September 30. LandSat is scheduled to actually launch on September 27. Launch window is right around 11:00 o'clock, but don't hold me to that. The City of Lompoc has received also grant funding to make streetscape and transportation improvements along Highway 1 and 246 corridors, and is seeking the community's input on how these improvements would best be carried out. The grant funding for the improvements was secured in November of 2018 through Senate Bill 1 from the California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans. A webpage has been established for Streetscape Multimodal Improvements Project, which includes a virtual project presentation recording in both English and Spanish, and a survey and mapping tool for providing community feedback. So the webpages, if you go to our website at thecityoflompoc.com/streetscape, you'll find it there. And please remember, it's, if you have any kind of comments for the public, it's best to put it in the survey versus social media, because we don't get that included in our survey that we need. So please put any and all comments in that area. And, let's see, last one, the City of Lompoc Urban Forestry Division and Beautification and Appearance Commission are pleased to invite the community to the Arbor Day Celebration at Recognition Grove in River Park. The event is at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 25. It honors those who have contributed significantly to the enrichment of the Lompoc community. Arbor Day is typically held in April, but was delayed this year due to COVID, so Arbor Day in Lompoc is expected to be back on track again in April of 2022. And that's all I have for today.
Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, we will go on to public comment on consent calendar. This is for consent calendar only. If you have a comment, you're welcome to come to the podium and have three minutes, or you may call. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio to reduce the feedback. While we wait to see if there are any calls or anyone wants to speak, we will, I'll read the consent calendar purpose. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on consent calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one rise and no calls come in, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item three for a brief discussion.
Item three, so that will go right before the second oral communication. Any other desires? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion, then we accept consent calendar excluding item number three.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Ball seconds that. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 401. All right. There are no staff presentations on the agenda tonight, so we will move to oral communications. This is predominantly for what is not on the agenda and related to the city, so you have three minutes to provide oral communication. You may do so at the podium or via phone call. To call, the number is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I would like to say first off that the walkway towards City Hall looks so much better. Thank you so much. I appreciate the great prayer we had tonight and talking about the people that keep us safe and God's blessings on them, very much appreciated. I urge you to inform the California Legislature, if you have not already done so, you oppose SB 9 and SB 10, the attempt of which is to destroy neighborhoods. Please clarify to Sacramento, you will not tolerate their attempts to interfere in local zoning regulations. The recall election fraud was broadcast on CNN. The United States Navy Judge Advocate General's Corp. has indicted California Governor Gavin Newsom. The charges include treason and crimes against humanity. Anyone who declares the suspension of constitutionally guaranteed rights is making war against our Constitution and therefore we, the people. As we move forward, redirect priorities to serve the small businesses and citizens of Lompoc. The lockdowns, the masks, the vaccines, all of it violated our rights under the Constitution. And yes, back to the prayer, the best is yet to come, and it will be better than ever before.
Good evening, I'm Reverend Joy Price, the pastor at First United Methodist Church of Lompoc, and our church is located at 925 North F Street, at the corner of North Street and F Street. I come this evening to congratulate the city council and the people of Lompoc on the passage of Proposition Q. These additional funds are very important to the long-term health and growth of Lompoc. As you begin to consider how these funds might be used in the future, I want you to know that one of the primary reasons that I voted for Proposition Q was so that we might find funding for a cahoots-in-Lompoc program. I think that the cahoots-in-Lompoc program would be an ideal companion to the various lifestyle and security programs in our community, improving living conditions for everyone. I have complete respect for our first responders in Lompoc. They do a wonderful job, very professional, and they work hard every single day. I believe that people like Chief Mariani, Captain Martin, and Chief Welch should be congratulated for the professionalism of these people. But I also believe that cahoots in Lompoc would enhance the services of our police and fire personnel. In fact, I think it would provide them with support for all of their duties. Now, my church happens to be located in an area that is frequented by many homeless, low-income, and marginalized people. We experience crime regularly, everything from vandalism to burglary and threatening behavior. And every time we call the police, they respond and they do a wonderful job. However, much of the time, the type of assistance that we need is not from the police. Instead, we need someone who deals with the mentally ill and the drug addicted, those who become agitated and are frightening when you confront them. The cahoots-in-Lompoc program would address the majority of the issues that we have on our church campus. I see I'm running out of time here. What I would like to... May I continue?
You can wrap it up, how about that?
All right, all right. Just a couple of quick examples. I had a woman standing outside of my office a week ago screaming at the top of her lungs for well over an hour. I could have called the police, but that would not have been an appropriate use of our police resources. What we needed was a cahoots response. So, there are many examples of what goes on in and around my neighborhood, and I believe very strongly that this community, our church, and even I myself, need a cahoots program here in Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dave Baker, and I am the chairman of the Lompoc Parks and Recreation Commission. I, for the last, for most of this year, we've been a crew of three, and it's, we're missing representation, we usually have five people. I'd like to set a reminder for Districts 2 and 3, try and find some, some help for our commission. Only having three members has been difficult. If one of us can't make a meeting, we have to cancel that meeting. It's a burden on staff if they've come in late, and also, the public needs our commission. So I just wanted to remind that we're looking for help. If you need help recruiting, I think each of you have my number, and you can give me a call, I'm happy to help you guys out. On behalf of the commission, I wanted to come to you. We've got some great people, the three individuals we do have, we're excited and happy to help. If you have things that come across your desk, just keep us in mind, because we don't have a lot of work, so don't forget to use us, okay? That's all I have, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Dorian Hodge, I live here in Lompoc on 220 South I Street. I'm here today to echo everything that Pastor Joy said about cahoots, crisis assistance helping out in the streets. It is a program that is so desperately needed. Our police have enough to do with dealing with crime. They may not necessarily be equipped to deal with mental health issues, homeless trespassers, people who are suicidal, and those just needing some kind of crisis intervention. I hold a leadership position in the church. I was at the church office this afternoon. From our office door, there was a homeless person, and we generally don't call the police about homeless people, but he was face down. When I first arrived, I thought he was passed out or dead, but it's apparent he had some kind of a drug-type problem. Well, later on, I wasn't really looking, but later on, he got up and urinated against the wall of our facility. We have that happen every day. Two of our parishioners, leaders within our church, come to the church every morning and hose down the areas where there has been urination, defecation, and it's not just the homeless, but we do have a lot of people who are in crisis, the drug abuse. And cahoots is gaining a lot of popularity throughout the United States. There was an article in People Magazine, it was the 26th July issue of People Magazine, talking about how helpful cahoots is in relieving the burden from police when it comes to responding to mental health crises, homeless trespassers, so on and so forth. We need this program in our city like tomorrow. And as a matter of fact, Pastor Joy joked this afternoon that they could set up their headquarters on our campus at our church. That's how, how many homeless that we have throughout the day, at night, camping on our property, and drug abusers, and we have a very elderly population of members in our church, and a lot of them are very afraid to come to the church at night for any meetings that might be held. I see my time is reaching its end, but please, we need cahoots. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise in room, we'll go to...
Hello, my name is Afonso Molovar, and I would like to speak on cahoots. In 2003, I suffered through an earthquake. What I did not know is why I survived. Proverbs 3:5, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and do not lean in your own understanding." I have a dream, most famous iconic quote, "The day of the modification will be when modification comes from up above, and when one as a whole can trust thy neighbor like a brother and sister." So I stand here like a foreigner, like one that does not know his own country. My race for life has downturned its course for justice and equality. In our court of law, it is stated, "Justice is innocent until proven guilty." I have my rights, and I presently wish to exercise them and stop oppression. On this subsequent of different phases and times, what is needed is understanding. Jesus Christ led the way, and many others, with the quality of suffering and vulnerability. I have walked faithfully and scored for trials. The city has broken the law and disrespected pitifully our founding fathers. Our Constitution of rights was very meticulously prepared by great minds. God has proven right over our predestined, now I am, and hold my rights to use the law for myself, defense like many others. I like solutions, not problems. God, praise America.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to the phones.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, this is Leah from Lompoc. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, the people in attendance, and those of us listening at home. I just wanted to push back once again against the first speaker. Quick fact check, there was no fraud in the recent recall election. Perhaps in some other parallel universe that some of our fellow citizens are currently residing in, but not here in this California. No fraud, once again, no one, yes lost, and the passage of Measure Q was a mandate from the people who voted in the city. So thank you, voters of Lompoc. Unfortunately, the voter turnout was only about 50%, so we can only do better, and if you didn't vote in this election, there's another one coming up in June, and then another one in November. And remember, if you didn't vote, you don't get to complain. Thank you, have a great evening.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes to give your public comment, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, thank you for the time to speak. My name is Kevin Maxwell, I'm an 11-year resident of the Lompoc Valley. I'm calling tonight because I had an interesting experience, which is causing me to sleep in my car this evening. My partner recently sold her house, we spent last week moving, couch surfing, limited bathroom access, whatnot. We had a reservation tonight at the corporate motel next to the airport, and when we went to check in just before 5:00, we were denied a room because my partner had a Lompoc address on her driver's license. I went in, asked to speak to the manager, I was denied access to a manager, told there was not one there. I said, "I'd like in writing that you're refusing to rent us a room," and they refused, so I waited until they called the police to show up. The police informed me that they have a policy, they do not rent to locals within a 50-mile radius, because apparently the town is so full of homeless people and meth heads that they don't rent to locals. So I know you guys have someone on your council who's deeply entrenched in the hotel industry, and unfortunately, she's not there tonight, but I was wondering, what does this say about Lompoc? What does it say that no one that has an address within 50 miles of here can rent a hotel room? Thank you for your time.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Morty Coppich. Hi, Joyce, I'm also a member of the First United Methodist Church. The program she was speaking about has a lot to do with the homeless crowd, which I am part of. I know most of the homeless people here in Lompoc, and I think it would be very good to do that program. The reason I'm homeless is because I had a fire in my, in a mobile trailer park behind the high school, Missile Village, destroyed my trailer, I lost $26,000. Then I got an RV, lost that, then the second RV, I lost that, and now the third RV I'm living in, I'm probably going to lose that due to a smog issue. Now, I just want, please, the police to have a little bit more lenience towards the RV situation here in Lompoc, and, you know, maybe talk to the owners of the RVs a little bit more and see what their situation is, because you can register and insure an RV, but you have to get it smogged, and if it's not running right, you can't get it smogged. Now, where are you going to put the RV if it won't smog? I'm looking for a place to put mine, private property, and, you know, I'm going to have my money. my mind, waiting for the tow truck to come and take away my, my home, and my wife has medical issues, and we're living on my social security disability because I have epilepsy. So I'm just calling for that view, and say that what Pastor Joyce was talking about is a good thing for Lompoc to consider. Thank you very much.
We good with all the phone calls? That's it? Okay, thank you. Did we have any written communications, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. All right, we will now close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Our next agenda item is appointments, the council appointment of a council representative to the western area of the San Ynez River Valley Groundwater Basin Committee. And I believe we have our administrative analyst, Kristin Worthley, here to answer any questions of anyone, and/or just open it up for discussion by council. Councilmember Ball.
So I'm interested in water and what it means to people, so I'm, I'd like to nominate myself for this, because I think it's important.
All right. Councilmember Starbuck.
I like trees, so I'm going to nominate Jeremy Ball.
So I believe that it's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for 01. Congratulations, Councilmember Ball. And aren't you relieved, Councilmember Starbuck? I believe you've been on that for a year now?
Never been a media.
Did we have any additional written communications, not otherwise mentioned?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. All right, we will go back to consent calendar item number three, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 6450 (21), approving amendment number three to the Memorandum of Understanding with Employees Represented by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union 1245, and approving supplemental appropriations to fund the amended compensation plan. And I believe that it was Councilmember Starbuck who had questions.
The real thing I wanted to do here, Ms. Rup, was kind of bring out when we're handing out pay raises, this was one that was discussed, it was a closed chamber, now it's on consent. But there's a couple of questions I had about this was, in this report here, we've listed that we have $12,870 from the general fund, $133,984 is going to come out of, I'm going to assume, the enterprise funds, which eventually will lead to a raise, an increase in, you know, our electric, water, et cetera. Does this include future steps in here? What it didn't do was show how people are going to go from a step one to a step five. There's a significant difference, $20,000 in one of these steps, and it doesn't break out what we're paying now and what we could possibly pay in two years. The second question I had is, the supplemental resources to fund these appropriations, are, these aren't broken out, so I just kind of want to make it a public, what's going on? You know, we, we passed a sales tax, and everybody's going, "Okay, we need more police," and all that. Well, now we're nibbling away, nibbling away. Last, you know, September 17th, we gave out raises, we're giving out more raises now. If we could just kind of put it out for people, please.
Yeah, and for the steps, no, that, that's a one, that's showing it what it would be today, so. But if someone's at step five, and we usually have a one to five, and if they're at step five, then they've topped out. If they were at step two, then yes, that we'd see some increases until they hit step five.
So really, this number could fluctuate and go up significantly if everybody was a step two and they made it to step five before the 23 budget ends.
I guess it depends on significant, there's a very few amount of people in this one. It's the Treasury staff, more or less, so we're, I think it's six or eight people, so it's not a, not a large department or division at that point, but it would have an increase annually.
Right. So I mean, I mean, so the supplemental resources, though, if we could just identify those very quickly, too?
Councilmember Starbuck, Gabe Garcia, Human Resources Manager. Just going back to the step question, so we do have a number of our employees that are at the top step already. There's a, there's a small minority of those employees that are, that are still in either, between step zero and step three, and those are at the Treasury clerk level. So when Mr. Albro put in the appropriations, he put those in considering where each, where each employee will land within the budget cycle. So it, it won't affect the budget, that's why the, the total amount in the fiscal impact is in there, because when Management Services Director Dean Albro put those in, he did take those into consideration when he does his salary projections.
So basically, what we're saying, when we list the fiscal impact, this will not exceed $150,000 in the 23 budget.
That's correct.
So we'll be there. And, you know, once again, if we could just, you know, just talk about, you know, the, it says, you know, on line item E here, supplemental resources. See, it doesn't list where the supplemental resources to fund the supplemental appropriations It's right, adopt resolution, and then line item E.
Oh, sorry, front first page. Approve the supplemental resources to fund the supplemental. So the supplemental ones would be the additional utility pieces, not all general fund.
So we're going to, it's just going to be more taken out of the utilities then?
That's, the majority of it would come in.
The majority of it. That was my big question. I just, it hadn't been discussed for quite a long time, so I just wanted to bring it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any more questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I move that we accept item three.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for 01. This is your final opportunity for oral communication on city matters. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. If there is something you would like to speak on, again, you have three, two minutes at the podium for the final oral communications of the evening. Seeing as we have no one coming to the podium in the room, and no calls coming in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council comments, meeting, and reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Ball.
Just a couple of quick things, just to reiterate this, let's see, what's the date again? Make sure I get it right. This coming Saturday, September 25th, that's the Arbor Day celebration, and I'm just really excited. I'm going to be there, hope you can make it, too. Honoring June Schwartz, Patricia Nuremberg, and Victor Jordan, all very deserving of this. So again, that's at River Park at the Recognition Grove, that's at 10 a.m. And then one other thing, and this is happening on October 2nd, and thanks to the, the Chords Foundation and C4 out there, not local nonprofit, but they're going to have a special day at Beatty Park. They're going to be planting, I believe, I'm not sure they're planting trees there, but they have a plaque honoring Marlon Brumfield, who was shot and murdered here in Lompoc a couple of years ago. So again, we want to bring attention to those that have lost their lives to violence, and those that have been impacted by this. And after that, there's going to be a community bike ride. There's going to be one for adults and one for kids. I honestly don't have a bike at the moment, so I'm going to borrow one, just full transparency there. But again, I'm very proud of this community for stepping up and for being sensitive to the issues that we've dealt with, and trying their best to bring the community together, and I'm excited to join them. So don't forget, that's October 2nd at 11 a.m. at Beatty Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
I don't really have any reports, but we did hear from Mr. Dave Baker out there that we do have a need for commissioners in, in some of these districts. I'm representing District Two. If anyone out there is interested in donating their time and helping the city move forward, especially the parks, we have other commissions available in other districts. I would appreciate it. You know, one thing about being in leadership, we can't do it by ourselves. You know, I think the commissions are a great voice for the rest of the community, and I'd really appreciate a little bit more help on the commission, so we do have some vacancies. So if there's anybody you know, Mr. Baker, same thing, Dave, if you know of anybody that's out there, we definitely would appreciate another application or two here for the commissions. Thank you.
Thank you for making that appeal. I was going to do the same, but you took care of it. Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, being a tree guy, I want to see everybody at Arbor Day, and I have no reports.
All right. It's been a busy month. I attended the Santa Barbara County Area Government Subregional and Regional Meetings, the Santa Barbara County Elected Leaders Homeless Forum, the 9/11 Tributes, both at Station 51, and then Skydive Santa Barbara. And I want to thank Skydive Santa Barbara, Eddie's Grill, and Barnstormers for sponsoring that. It was a really nice, unique event for our community to memorialize that event. I also attended a final meeting for the League of California Cities Transportation, Communications, and Public Works Meeting that I sit on. I also want to thank St. Mary's. They put on a first responders lunch this previous week, and fed all of the first responders from police, fire, both at the city, the county, and at the base. And it's just a really nice event that they've been doing since 2007, and despite the pandemic, they have bagged the lunches, and it is an amazing barbecue, so thank you for doing that. I also attended Northern California Power Agency meetings this month, and did my first Lompoc Police Department dispatch sit-along. And that was quite the experience, to sit in at the 911 and listen to the calls coming in, and how efficient and professional our staff are, and how well they work with the police department and the fire department. So I encourage all of our council to take advantage of this opportunity and better understand, because while they work really hard, there's still a lot of equipment they need, and they need a little more space, because they are in probably the smallest area I've ever seen a dispatch in. So I just want to say a shout out to all of that staff, and really appreciate you taking the time. City Manager and I were invited to the Vandenberg Village Rotary for a Q and A last Friday, which we both attended. And then we have a potential to work regionally with Santa Barbara County Area Governments on a broadband regional plan, and they'll be coming forward to ask for time to propose how we might do that. And it's such an important issue as we come out of the pandemic, so I look forward to that future discussion. The mural for the launch will be technically unveiled. We've all driven by and watched its exciting development, but the ribbon cutting will be this coming Sunday at 2 p.m., so be sure and come out and support not only the artists, but all the organizations that supported this amazing contribution to our community. And as the city manager said, the launch is on Monday, following day, and you can come out to the airport between 9:00 and noon, and hang out with everybody else that's coming to town, or your neighbors, and watch from a communal area that really kind of builds the excitement. So I, we hope that it stays on track. It's been postponed twice, so we're all keeping our fingers crossed that it doesn't get postponed. My council's going to love me, because I still have a few announcements, but I think it's a really important time to make sure the community knows. There is a new service for our teens in the area. It's called Your Place Lompoc. It is created in partnership with Santa Barbara County, and it was, is looking to reduce the impact of opioid and stimulus crisis on Lompoc youth and families. Their center is located over on H Street. More details can be found at yourplace@sbwell.org, or calling 805-260-1108. They have drop-in hours from Tuesday through Thursday, 3:30 to 5 p.m., but they really would like you to call during COVID to make sure somebody's there. But they are available for individual appointments from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m., and they will have a ribbon cutting next Monday at 2 p.m. So it's an important resource that we need. Everybody's getting excited about Halloween, and the city, in partnership with the Chamber, is looking to do trick-or-treat event downtown on the 30th from 2:00 to 4:00. So they're looking for individuals in the downtown area to help the locations, as well as individuals to contribute to the activities for kids. So please reach out to either the Parks and Rec Division or to the Chamber in order to participate in that. There's also bringing back the Scarecrow Contest. So after a year, the Chamber is bringing it back, so you can participate as a business, and they will judge those, I think, before the 11th, so that they can give out the awards. But details are at the Chamber, so be sure and get involved in that, really show some community spirit. And the Lompoc Rec Department is having Dunkin' for Pumpkins on October 24th from 10 a.m. to noon. This does require preregistration, so they can have enough pumpkins for everybody, so now's the time to register for that. And there is more information on our Parks webpage about it happening at the Lompoc Aquatic Center. These two are more generalized. We have a need for lifeguards, and so there is lifeguard training. It is, October 1st is the pre-course, and then the instruction dates are October 2nd and October 3rd. The course fee is $200, and it will be refunded for participants who apply to become a lifeguard at Lompoc Aquatic Center, and you can call the Parks and Rec Department and register for that. So it's a great opportunity for those who love to swim and have a skill set they'd like to expand. And then last but not least, I think this one is really important for our community, the Lompoc Recreation Scholarships are now available. The city has some CDBG money that they've set aside to assist those who need it in order to register for some of the parks and recreational events. So please reach out to the Parks Department, or go to the portal that you register online and apply in order to utilize these funds to assist 250 low-income recreation program participants. Share with those you know that might be wanting to help their kids get into something but need a little assistance during this time. So lots of great things going on in our community. We're beginning to see the change we all believe in, and I really thank you all for supporting that and supporting each other and making some great requests. We will adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on October 5th, 2021.